We're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:30. We're gonna do approval of agenda as may be amended. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion, not move.
Motion, second?
Second.
All right. Is there any thing we need to change on the agenda?
I don't believe so. Just Board of Liquor Control, it's actually a tobacco license, so, but that's not really a big deal.
No. Anything you guys want to change or reorganize?
Nope.
Nope. All right. I don't think we need to, do we need a vote on? Yeah, so, all in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one. Next, we're gonna do approval of minutes. The first meeting minutes are, let me pull up the date. June 23rd, 2025. Can I get a motion to review the minutes?
Motion to review the minutes.
Yeah, second?
Second.
All right. Does anyone have any issues or edits that need to be made in the minutes?
I'm good.
Yep, I'm also fine with that. All right, so, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No one. Excellent. We are now gonna turn to inside the room first, and then we'll go online. Is there any citizen comment concerns that are not on the agenda? If we have agenda items, we can go on that. I'm gonna go around the room.
With the zoning administration.
Yeah, thank you.
With the zoning administration.
Sure.
That's coming up. Are you, are you gonna take all the questions on that?
Yes.
This is okay.
Yep.
The last meeting I was at, I asked for the paperwork. I talked to Dave. He said to go online and get it. I got some of it. But I also grabbed your book. In the back of your book, it says that you're supposed to supply that to me.
The book?
Right here, last page, if you want to read it. So, I would like four years of that.
The book or the town report? It looks like you just held up, yeah, we have copies of the town report. You would ask me?
Yeah, but I wanted, yeah, but in the back of your thing, if you want about the audit, it says to, that you should give it to me.
So, I did give it to you electronically. I showed you how to do it. So, there's back to 2,000.
I thought that I could just get the paperwork would be easier.
I can, I can print them out for you if you'd like.
I'll pay for them somehow.
No, it's fine. We'll just print them out. Yeah, just give me a call and I'd be more than happy to do it for you.
So, I got just a few quick things to go through. On the town offices, Roger was wondering about putting a temporary sign. If you look into Vista Print, it's fairly reasonable, because it's a little weird down there. When you go to try to get in the doors, you, I tried to go downstairs.
Right.
You know, you don't even know it's upstairs.
Yep.
That's just one thing. I had a question. On page 44 on the audit, you have $204,000 for a solar canopy.
What year is this?
This is 2024.
Okay.
So, you have $204,272 for a solar canopy. Which are the, you know, what you put up there. You don't have it in your book, on the budget book here. It's not in here. How was that paid for?
We'll have to go back and look. I can't give you an answer at this time.
Okay, if you guys could give me an answer, because I'd like to know if it came out of restricted funds or not.
Sure, yeah.
That's it for today.
Okay. Can you just make a note of that? Thank you. All right, going back around the room. Next, remember to say your name.
Vito Rosinas.
Vito.
Just a quick question. I noticed the other day, as I was going on slip lane on West Hill Road, that the yield sign was switched to the slip lane rather than that little turn lane off the access road. And I'm wondering why that was done. Was that done consciously or subconsciously? Or with some kind of plan for the future?
Do you know off the top of your head?
I know the yield sign was laying down on the ground, and it was put back up. I couldn't tell you which side of the road it was put on.
It wasn't put backward normally, I guess.
Well, I was told when it was down that it was supposed to be on the lane that would be, if you're coming down the hill to go down West Hill Road, that the yield sign would be on that.
Who told you that?
Our highway department.
Okay. Traditionally, it's been at right angles to that.
Okay. Yeah, we can, or not zoning, highway department, look back into it.
I mean, I tried calling you guys at the office, Kevin at the garage. I didn't get any answers.
You didn't call me?
So, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
If you called me, I'd have called you back, so I didn't have a message from you.
I probably didn't leave a message.
Yeah, and tradition's on the traffic light side. Yeah.
Okay.
And just to confirm, we are going to be able to comment on agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, is there a specific one, just so I make sure that I?
Reorganization of?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Going around, Deb, yes?
Okay, Debbie Burke. I was here when the architects came to discuss the swimming pool and the poolhouse. And regarding the condition of the pool that's here now, was it carefully inspected? And photos taken of the deviations of the problems or cracks or whatever? Because it, the complaint, the complaint was that you had to add water, you know.
Yeah, constantly.
I had a pool for 10 years in Connecticut at my house, and I took care of it. And every week or so, I'd have to add water to the pool, because it was a heated pool, and water evaporates out of the pool. I don't think that there's any pool anywhere that you don't have to add water to.
Sure.
So, I.
I'm sorry.
And I went to the pool yesterday and checked it over, and I didn't see any bubbles coming up. I didn't see any cracks or anything. And the poolhouse is just as nice and useful as it was back 48 years ago when, when we bought our house, first house here. And it didn't seem as though there were any problems with it. I didn't notice any cracks, any, any water stains in the ceiling or whatever. So, you know, I had asked the architects approximately ballpark figure of what it would cost to replace the pool. And they said, oh, over a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, that, that took my breath away. So, the other thing is, they were talking about losing the use of a pool while it's being taken out and another one put in, and moving it somewhere, and then having a much bigger poolhouse. And so, I, since I'm with the fire department, I was there 4th of July, and that's the biggest crowd that the pool ever gets.
Yeah, it was the biggest crowd.
And everything was very adequate. The size of the pool, the water was clean, the lifeguards are great. They, they take really good care of it. And the poolhouse was very adequate. And the bathrooms were, you know, there was no lines, you know, like you see at the football games or the baseball games. No lines for the ladies' room or anything.
Yeah.
And so, I'm, I'm interested in, in.
Just how it's documented and all that shit?
Yeah, yeah. And I'd like to see, they just said point blank, the pool needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Do you, do you know how that's documented, Dave, of how, where the cracks and stuff like that?
Well, so, I got into this late, kind of in the game with the pool, but they did have a committee forum that they talked about doing a master plan for the rec area down there, which there was a grant that the town received to do that work. The pool came up. I was at the last rec committee meeting, and they had the engineers there that were talking about the pool. It's not so much that the pool's leaking, is that too, it's 50 years old, and a lot of the equipment on it's beyond its useful life. They did look at alternatives, like three different alternatives to, to work on stuff down there. I don't really, no one's made a decision on any of it yet, so they're still kind of in this scoping study period. But, you know, I think the rec committee meets next week, I think the 28th maybe, down at the library. So, if you wanted more detail on that, that might be a good time to ask, because I'm sure that the engineers are involved, and it will be zooming into it.
Okay, the other, the other thing I wanted to mention that is, the, I grew up just north of Boston. And since I was five years old, I went to the Stone Pool. It's the same pool today, 75 years later. And it's been maintained. And if you maintain something, it's gonna last. And I, when the discussion came up about replacing the Woodstock High School, once again, I was here for the, I was witness to the architects, you know, and showing what they wanted to do with a very multi-million dollar building. And I mentioned that I went to Calvin Coolidge Junior High, which was built in 1892 in Melrose, Mass. And it, it, they didn't need it, so it was, it was dropped from the, the school, number of schools in Melrose, Massachusetts. And so, the, the building was empty for about 10 years. And someone said, oh, let's tear it down. And the engineer went, it was in fine shape. They turned it into condominiums. And if you want a condominium, a one-bedroom condominium in the Calvin Coolidge Apartments, which is on Main Street in Melrose, you're looking at a million and a half to $2 million. All they did was change the wiring and the plumbing.
Yep.
And put up some walls. And so, a very smart developer bought it for peanuts, and instead of them tearing it down. And so, I will attend the.
Yeah, I think for now, until they bring it to us, attend, attend the meetings, because they're going to be, they need that input. But not just, you know, we want the new best, but what do we do, what can we do for that? It's important to have multiple sides of it. So, thank you, Deb.
Yeah.
Anyone else on this side, questions?
Robert Salmeri with Killington Mall. Over the winter, when they moved back to Snowbanks up on the access road, the front-end loader took out my parking, my sign lights and my mailbox.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, when the town truck and the Killington Resort plow trucks plow, they, they pull into my parking lot. And with this weather pattern, I mean, I plow for a living in the winter. I have that park, the upper parking lot, gridded, Shorepack brought in, everything. They keep pushing it over the bank or down the Killington end. There's a big pile of the crush stone that I had in Shorepack last year. So, now when you pull in, there's a divot there. I think I showed it to you, Dave, when I was up there. I wanna know who's responsible, because Killington keeps giving me the, I'll call it dick-me-around.
Sure.
To put it bluntly. I don't think it's my responsibility to keep repairing these damages every year. There's been a mailbox there for 30 years. The sign's been there for 30 years. And the upper parking lot, where they turn around, which I haven't had a problem with it, but I'm also getting tired of laying out $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 for material every year, instead of someone coming back and re-grading what they pushed all the way down the end of the parking lot. So, I'd like to know whose responsibility is it?
Sal, are they turning around on your parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are they, and so they're actually, are they taking snow from the roads and pushing it through your property and out?
Yeah, and then down towards the riverbank, and then Killington comes in, and they come in with their big plow truck. And when the weather gets warm, I understand you dig down. Ricky knows it. He's been plowing forever. But I don't think it's my responsibility as a property owner to keep doing this. I've been doing it now for five years, and to be quite honest, it's getting expensive. I've probably paid $20,000 over the past five, six years.
Can't they pull in there and stay on the blacktop without even going on the dirt?
Yeah, but they, doesn't give them enough room to turn around, because they get, you know, those 10-wheeled is big long. And they don't wanna leave the town crud from the road in the middle of my parking lot, because, to be quite honest, my truck is not equipped, even though I have a dump truck, is not equipped to push that heavy wet sludge, you know, up into the snowbank.
There actually is a solution to this, Sal, because now the town owns that access road.
Okay.
So, they won't be turning around there. They'll be plowing straight through.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we got it with this, all these projects, so whether we want it or not, we gotta plow it. So, we'll be, they'll be plowing straight through this year.
Okay.
You know, right up to like where, where East, where East Mountain connects, so they'll be turning around there probably.
Okay, because I was gonna ask Wes when they came back up, if there's some dirt piles and stuff that I don't wanna spend, you know, five truckloads of material, because it's six inches down.
Yeah.
If I could grab that gravel, lay it out, and then.
Right, they've been using your lot anyway, right? So, I'm sure they'd do that for you.
Yeah, they're actually been pretty nice to work with.
Yeah, yeah, but hopefully, that turnaround situation should be taken care of this winter, because they'll be plowing straight through.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Sal. All right, continuing on, yes?
Paul Damasio, Hadley Hill Road. It's the last street in Killington on the way to Woodstock, in case you don't know. Seems that way. I've got a few different situations. Couple of you have heard them. But six months ago, I called the DPW guy. Told him about a problem on one of the culverts right near my driveway, half full of dirt. He said the fire department takes care of that. Haven't heard. No one came. So, then, the street was smoothed over by a grader. And I have no problem now with the culvert, because you can't see it or find it. The grader covered it. I called, I can't remember her name, the DPW person, the head, it used to be the head.
Abby?
Abby. Left her a message. This was three weeks ago. Haven't heard from her. So, then I called the town manager. Left a message with Linda is her name. Haven't heard from her.
Sure you did. I called you back last week.
No, you didn't. Because if you did left a message, it's not on here.
I'll look through my thing, because I know I did, I called you back.
Trust me. Did you leave a message? Because it's not here.
Sure I did, because you were asking about the culvert being plugged.
Right.
And I talked with Craig, and actually, no, I guess I talked with Kevin to see if we could get you guys to go up and clean them out. So, I'll run it by Kevin again, but I know that.
Yeah, we got it taken care of.
Yeah.
Do we?
And by the way, when will that be? Before the next heavy rain? Because if it rains heavy, that water comes down my driveway, and I'll be like Sal, fixing it myself.
Yeah, can we make sure that we, as soon as possible, someone will check?
Also, is there a way that they can, further down my, my yard, along the Hadley Hill Road, there used to be a chimp. Not really anymore.
Uh, like the culverts or?
Yeah, culvert, I mean, not the piping, the culvert. So, on both sides, by the way, on the upper side, that culvert's kind of full in now, too.
You can actually put one in with a grader right there. I used to.
They, they haven't, they haven't yet mowed the weeds off the side of the road, and they're quite high, and that's usually what fills it in as well. We get one, one, one a year. It's usually in September.
Okay.
Yeah. I will talk to Kevin tomorrow, and we'll go up and check it out and take care of it.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
All right, I know some more people came in while we were talking. Is there anyone else? Oh, is it?
Linda, you can end.
Okay, we're gonna go on. Oh, right. Actually, we're gonna go on to the people online. If anyone online has a question, you can come off mute. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna move to the next item, which is Board of Liquor Control. David, believe you're doing it for us tonight?
Right, so, yeah, Peggy and Monica are actually at a conference tonight. So, the only thing we have is actually, it's a, it's a tobacco license, which we discussed at the last meeting for the golf course. They want to sell cigars, so that's been applied for, and the state's just looking for town approval.
So, we just need signature on it?
No, just gotta prove it. It goes, it's all done online, so.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the, is it what class, or is it just tobacco?
It's just tobacco license for the Sherburne Golf Service Company.
Can I get a motion to approve the tobacco license for the Sherburne Golf Company?
Motion.
Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope. It is passed.
Thank you.
All right, next up is reorganization of planning and zoning department. We will, I will come to you guys. The way that we're gonna do this is, I have about three motions to make, so we're gonna take it one motion at a time. And I will stop at questions for each one, if that, if I know there's been made public that there wants to be questions. All right, so, over the last couple of weeks, myself, board, Bill, we've done our due diligence on zoning administrative position, because that is one of the only other positions that the select board oversees. That position is nominated by the planning board, brought to the select board to vote on. Select board votes on that person and has basically administrative oversight of that person, including the way we're set up, pay, hours, everything. It doesn't make much sense, in my opinion, that we as a board oversee a person that is not the town manager. By legislature, we, we can, we are, we still will. But I think it'd be important for clarity of oversight to make the town manager, and any designees, the proxy of the select board. So, the motion I'm gonna put forward is to authorize the town manager and any designee he has, like a director of planning, to be the administrative authority over the zoning administrator acting as the select board's proxy. So, this is to solidify oversight and structure, organizational structure. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll now open up to conversation. I'm gonna first go to the board, and then can do, does anyone have questions or discussion on that?
I have a question.
You have a question. Go ahead.
How does this work when the zoning administrator is also a select board member and I answer to the select board?
There should be a separation of duties. If there is a issue that is larger than your standard administrative, like, hey, let me make sure that things are signed off. Let me make sure that, if you need something, you can come to me to get it. If it's bigger than that, I would recommend to bring it to the board. Okay. Because we still have authority over it. You're, you would just be acting as our proxy for the day-to-day operations. So, that, that's how I would recommend it.
So, if I understand this correctly, the select board isn't ceding their authority over the zoning administrator, per se?
Right.
But because the select board isn't a day-to-day, in day-to-day attendance at town hall, we're saying day-to-day management activities for the position should go through the town manager's office?
Yes.
Okay? And the town manager then brings the normal personnel recommendations for the position back to the select board as the select board is actually physically managing the position?
Right. We are not letting go of that oversight. We are just, which we can't by statute.
Right.
We are saying day-to-day operations is under the town manager, acting as our proxy.
Right.
We can still make decisions, but he's acting as our proxy.
He's acting as our proxy, and then according to state statute, we can do that.
Yeah, and it's commonly done in most towns. We just have never formalized it.
No more questions.
Yeah.
So, in that department, it's actually zoning and planning?
Yeah.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that Lisa, our planner, was the one responsible for creating the budget within that department?
Yes.
So, was she technically the department head?
That is how I understand it, but that is also, that is up to you.
Okay.
I mean, you have your directors in your heads and all that. I mean, again, I'd recommend having an org structure printed out or hard copied. But, I mean, it would be, it would be reporting to you, and that's why it also ain't designated, so that you can have it through the correct departments. Because really, it should, in my view, the zoning administrator should be functioning as part of zoning planning. There is a director of that. You go through your chain of command. So, hopefully, you go through that designated person, if that is how you have it set up. And if not, then it would just go to you. But that is, that's, again, up to how you wanna run the office. I would say we're hands-off on the day-to-day.
Okay.
Questions here? Questions about this? Vito?
I was just gonna ask if this was actually legal, but you seemed to have answered that question. Do we have anything in our, I'm not gonna say bylaws, but.
Yeah, we don't have a town charter. We don't have.
I mean, I know there's job descriptions. I know there's, there's some, some guidance that's been initiated about the structure of things in town, you know, who's, you know, who's responsible for what, you know, how things are supposed to be done. And maybe this is a takeoff, because during the last election, there was a lot of lip service paid to audits.
Like what?
Audits.
Audits, yes, yeah.
Okay, and, and, you know, there are audits to see if people who are working for the town are compliant with all the levels of laws and ordinances and rules that are made up from the federal level to you guys. So, that's the compliance audit. There are also operational audits, which an outsider comes in and looks at how things are running in the town to see if they're running efficiently and effectively, okay? So, to better the government and the function of the town. So, I guess what I'm getting at is, what is the status of these audits that were proposed during the election?
We, we're already talking about the zoning administrator position.
Well, I, I know that. You just said you changed things over because of the function. Now, I'm talking about operational and compliance audits, which are directly relevant to what you're talking about.
I'm not seeing it, but.
Okay, well, let me read you the definition.
Okay.
Okay. Operational audits. These audits assess the efficiency and effectiveness of an organization's operations, looking for areas of improvement in processes and procedures. Compliance audits. These audits evaluate whether an organization is adhering to relevant laws, regulations, policies, and contractual agreements. I think that says exactly what I need.
With those, those audits, I cannot tell you if we've had any of those audits ever in town?
I, I, I agree. I agree. But again, 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 I'm going back to all that lip service that was paid to audits for various reasons, which I knew had a lot of bearing on this particular department, okay? There was calls for forensic audits, which are proud of legal investigations.
Different.
All kinds of financial audits, this, that, and the other thing. Now, I don't believe that there's any fraud or thievery going on in the town.
Okay.
I'm not sure about people being compliant, and I'm not sure the operations of the town are at their peak.
Sure.
So, what I would suggest to the people who are advancing an audit of the town, that these audits be done to satisfy both sides of the equation.
Sure.
So.
Okay, yeah.
I can't respond to that.
If you'd like.
Sure.
It's not, again, it's a little off-topic here, because I don't wanna go down.
I know, but, but I just wanted to kind of give you a recap of just me and my, whatever months I've been here, what's been going on. So, if you do read the audits that I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. It's George.
Yeah.
Vito George, right? So, the audits that I directed you to that day, we talked on the phone, that are, that are on the town website, there, when the auditors come, there is this questionnaire that they'll ask, like the board chair to fill out, myself, a bunch of other people in the office, on sort of a checks and balances of how many people are, have check-writing authority, who's opening the mail, who's, you know, who's got the checks in hand. So, a lot of that happens internally when we do the annual audits for the finances. And I think if you read, it's early on in the audits, you'll see that there's a whole page about, there's a whole section about that that kind of breaks it down. And then what comes with the audit, which is where that this firm doesn't put it in the audit, is there's a thing called a management letter that comes to me that I have to sign off on, that shows whether for like, for financing, like if we're following GASP, if we're following all of the current auditing financial regulations, and areas where we're not, like, do we, do we have the right? where we're not, like, do we, do we have the right financial policies in place? You know, do we even have them adopted? There's, you know, we're, that's, that was an area where this year, we need to make sure all this stuff happens. I can tell you, because we've been working on this for a while, there were some financial issues here with the way the interim financing was working, the way that restricted funds were working, the way the general fund was working. Abby is on here, her and I have worked diligently on this to try to fix all this, to make sure that there's the right interim financing for the funding that's coming in, whether it's bonds or grants or whatever revolving law, everything, USDA, to make sure that we have the right interim financing in place for that product, so when we're done, we're not like, oh, no, how do we pay for this? That was a problem, that was a huge problem that we're still dealing with right now. So, and that really messed up the general fund budget. It, it attacked the restricted funds, and, you know, we've, since then, we've, we've recognized it, and we need to come up with a solution on how to reimburse that, or do we move forward with it? You know, this, something that took a few years to get this way, but it's here. And, I mean, I'd be more than welcome to show anybody what's going on with, if they wanna stop in the office, but, you know, it's, we're not, we're not gonna go broke, but we really need to fix a lot of things, and-
Well, it's showing here that $204,000 is not in your book here, but it is in your audit.
So that was bad.
I just have a quick question.
No.
Do the auditors get into the payroll, too?
Yep.
Okay.
They do payroll.
Because I'm not seeing that yet in the paperwork I'm looking at, it's a little on online, that's why I like to have a paper.
Sure, I can print them out, just tell me you want the same four years, George, just the last four years?
Yeah, that's good.
I'll do, I'll give you a shot, I think I still have your number.
If you still have my number, yeah, that'd be great.
That's not a problem. But, really, I mean, if you guys got questions and you wanna come in, like, I'd be more than happy to show you what we have, it's all public record, it's, there's nothing top secret, you know, and, we're, we're gonna fix it, we'll get there. But I think this year, we're on a good track to make things whole and right again, and-
When you're saying with the debt situation, that was because we paid off something that we weren't supposed to pay?
No, it was, it was before that, there were a few other things that were-
I understand, but that, how much was that?
The one that was, that was paid off, that should've been refied, was like $350,000.
So it was a $350,000 mistake?
That was a mistake? Yep, yep, you're right.
That's why a forensics lawyer, or getting tired, and seeing what's really going on.
Well, we found that one-
One of these mistakes are being made.
We found that one right off the bat, that was a pretty easy one to figure out when we're closing the year out, so-
Well, you figured it out, but you paid it.
I, I didn't pay it.
I understand.
It was paid.
Who did pay?
Right, it was paid.
I'll listen to what they say.
Right. It was, it came from the finance department.
Okay.
So, but it's, you know, we, and we talked to our, our bank about this, too, like, we've been very transparent with the, with the bond bank, with our lenders, community bank, and said, this is where we're at. And they're like, we're gonna help you out. So, you know, we've got, we've got the people behind us to, to make this right, and we're just gonna make it right.
I mean, that's why the restricted funds are there.
I agree with, well, the restricted-
But, you can't keep hitting the restricted funds.
Right.
Like, if that $204,000 is paid out of the restricted funds-
Right.
-that means you backed another 200 grand out of there.
Exactly. So like most towns, like, when they get to May or June, they'll take some restricted fund money out to get through that, June to June 30th, and they know that they're anticipating taxes to come, and so it comes back in and it replenishes it. The problem with this is-
You also have to document that, though.
These were things that were paid outside of those general fund bills, so, how do you reimburse that? Now you're using money that involves interest, so it's, you know, we're getting there.
No, but, we, we went through this with the golf course many years ago, of stuff being swept underneath the rug.
Yep.
And we have three new select board members that, you know, ran on transparency in an audit, and, you know, I voted for them. I'd like to see what they said they were gonna do when they ran, 'cause otherwise, got it, may as well run for president next, 'cause higher than the bottom.
Sal, I think you're seeing that, okay, because we're working with Dave.
Well, I'm working with these guys, and I gotta tell you, I like working with them, but I just-
You gotta see it.
I wanna be able to trust town hall again.
I think you gotta understand, Dave is also new, okay? So, we've been working with Dave, okay, to make sure that he has the resources that he needs to do what he needs to do, okay? And we've been trying to stay out of his way, so we don't hog all of his time, but also, if he has questions, or if he has queries about how he thinks he should handle it, we've been available for him, okay, to do that. And there's a, there's a number of things going on within town hall right now, okay, that he's looking at. And it turns out that the zoning administrator was just one of those things. So, so those recommendations have sent, those recommendations are popping out, which is why it's on today's agenda, okay? And since we're starting the fiscal year, it's a good time to address it.
Yeah, excellent.
And that brings up my next point.
Oh, is it, we're still on the, right now?
The zoning officer.
The zoning officer specifically on oversight of who oversees?
Yes.
So is it on that, or?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, all the years I've been up here, we've always had a full-time zoning administrator, which was Dick Horner back then.
It was, the funding for it was split between zoning and planning.
Okay.
So we had one person doing it, but they were part-time zoning administrator, part-time planner.
Okay, so the same person, but he had two different paths.
Yeah, two sources of funding.
Okay, 'cause that's what I was gonna ask, are we gonna go to a part-time zoning officer, or are we gonna be?
Jump ahead.
Because it's nice to walk into an office and know someone's gonna be in the office.
Yes. Yeah, let me get through stuff, and hopefully we'll answer your questions.
Yep.
All right.
Just a quick response to David.
Sure.
Again, what you were explaining to you is a financial audit, a year-end financial audit that you're complying with, whatever it is for municipalities, J, U, R. What I was describing was, number one, compliance audit and an operational audit, which there is some overlap in the financial area. But these are about following procedures, compliance, like you said about the banks, you gotta deal with banks, you know, banks have certain rules. I forget exactly what I heard about it, there was something that you guys had to meet, and, you know, before you went to the bank to get your interim loan or something, I don't know the exact details, but this kind of stuff is, you know, apparently it messed you guys up. But there are other more granular things that need to be looked at. The employees, the low-level employees, following the procedures that need to be followed to control the finances, how deposits are getting-
I'm gonna pause you right there.
-taken, how disbursements are being made, who's signing off on them.
Vito, again, I'm gonna pause you right there, because we're talking about oversight of the zoning administrator specifically, but I will tell you, we do have, we have been working on updated-
Personnel.
Personnel policy, thank you. Updated personnel policy to address some of those granular issues, which we're gonna be bringing in the next, hopefully, month.
Vito, would you have time to just come see me, and we can go over what you're looking for, and we'll figure out how to get it done?
I wanna leave it in general terms, because I don't wanna be the one doing the job. I think it needs to be a person, independent of the town, the town government, who can come in with a clear vision, without any bias towards one way or the other. And I think if you guys are gonna go the route you're going, I think you need at least one of these audits done.
Thank you.
For, you know, to, you know, like, like Sal said, to restore confidence in town government.
And I think we can look into that, see what the pricing is for that type of audit.
Got it on the list, so.
All right, thank you.
Might be something you wanna look in every four years doing.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea.
You know what I'm saying? So, it keeps, it keeps taxpayers happy, they can understand what's going on, you know?
I'm gonna bring it back to this motion, because we may have more questions, because we got a couple other ones, but, thank you, everyone, for your input.
Paulie, how's our hand?
Oh, Paulie, do you have a question? Sorry, I keep forgetting about online.
No, it's okay. Here, I'll turn my video, if you can see it there.
Sure. Hey, Paul.
I, I just wanted to caution the board about the vertical silo that you may be putting yourself into with this new organization. It was my understanding that the planning commission recommended the zoning administrator, and was like a separate, you know, authority, and if you start putting everyone in a vertical line, like, you know, what Dave Altherton was saying about checks and balances, it all falls apart.
Sure.
Right? And so you have to be really careful when you're in these different commissions, that you're not just up surfing their responsibility and putting it all on Dave's shoulders, and then him putting it all on the manager's shoulders, who's then overseeing somebody else, because then you have no checks and balances, you've taken it all away from the public, who, who has their commissions, and also those commissions, who have a duty to the public. And so just be careful when you're going, it could sound nice and easy to have vertical silos, but you're, you really are missing something without that kind of check and balance, so, just wanted to put that out there on this topic.
And then, just to be clear again, because we're gonna vote on our motion, unless anyone else says anything, online. But again, this is for the town manager and a designated, like a director, if he feels appropriate, to have our, our authority, not anyone else's, we can't grant, you know, we can't say you are also the one finding nominees for stuff, it is just our authority to act as our proxy. So, again, I'm gonna read the motion, make a motion to authorize the town manager and any designees to have administrative authority over the zoning administrator, acting as the select board's proxy. So, can I get all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? None? No abstain? All right, thank you. Our next motion on this I'm going to make is a motion to recommend that the, recommendation to the town manager and the, again, designee, that the zoning position revert to a part-time hour position. It has, over the last year, been a full-time position, and from my due diligence that we've done, and asking different people in charge, talking to the zoning administrator himself, talking to planning, talking to town manager, talking amongst ourselves, we don't feel that there is the workload for a full-time position with the staffing that we currently have. Just for everyone's awareness, currently in zoning and planning, our staffing wage, if you look at our last budget, it's about a quarter of a million dollars for zoning and planning. I don't feel like we have that much work, and from our, our due diligence, it doesn't seem that way. That doesn't mean that this position may need to balloon up. We're staffing for baseline, it may need to balloon up when we have village come in, when we have large projects, but those large projects are a temporary state, so, again, I think that the baseline should be part-time. So that would be, can I get a motion, or I can make the motion, I guess. I'm making the motion to recommend that the zoning administrative position revert, revert to a part-time paid position, hourly position. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all right, thank you. Any discussion on that, from the board, first, and town manager? No? Any questions from the town?
Yes.
Let me go to Sal for some-
So, we're going back to part-time zoning officer, and he's gonna be part-time planning.
No, we have a full-time planner.
Now, who's a full-time planner?
Lisa Davis.
Okay.
And Will.
And Will.
Will is part-time planner, part-time zoning administrator assistant.
Now, why haven't we met them? I've been to town hall over a dozen times, and I've yet to see either one of them. Only one I've met is Dave and Abby.
Well, he's in our office every Monday through Friday, every day, and he's usually eight to three.
Eight to three? Well, I know what, over this, this water nipple, over a dozen times at both town halls, and neither person was in either place. Do I need to bring in a time clock for the staff, so that they can punch in?
You can, he's pretty, he's pretty diligent, showing up on time, so-
Because-
Next time, well, he's over on the other side, on the new town office, so-
Okay.
And Lisa moved over there. You'll, you'd see Will at a lot of night meetings, too, he goes all to planning commission meetings, and some of the rec committee ones, he's, he usually zooms into this one, except for tonight, but, he's, he's all over the place.
Right, but again, we should be able to go to a town hall office and find the person there, and that's what I get very upset about, 'cause a dozen-
Well, if you come see us, we'll get our new signs put up, so we, everyone knows where we are, and would you come see us, and, he's in there, he's in there all day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's, he's good, he's our-
Or, sorry, Sal.
So, I don't have the up-to-date numbers, but I have the numbers from our year-end, calendar year-end.
Yeah.
And, looking at the revenues for the zoning department, at the end of December, they were $232,630, which is an increase from fiscal year '24, of about $70,000 in six months, so it's still six months to go. So, that certainly covers that zoning administrator's $48,000 salary, or is it $52,000?
Vito, can I, can I respond to that?
Anyway, well, let me go on, let me finish my thought.
Instant.
I think the number looks-
So, then you just said that, that, that particular department, which you call town planner and zoning administrator, you have a planner who gets $82,000, and, and, well, who's the, so, who's the, who's the guy, who's the other guy?
Will, the assistant zoning, or assistant planning, assistant zoning.
Okay, so you've got another guy with, for $60,000. So the assistant planner, zoning guy, makes more money than the actual zoning guy, okay? That's the numbers.
Okay.
Now, going back to your reasoning about making the zoning administrator part-time, I don't remember exactly the history, but I remember that Dick Horner was the zoner planner, so I think you're going back to saying, well, we used to have a part-time zoning administrator, and Dick Horner, he worked half in and half out, and, so there was one person doing both jobs. Now we have three people doing those two jobs.
Yes.
But only one person is getting caught.
So, the board, well, one, the board cannot do anything staffing with any of those other positions, because they respond to the town manager, and we do not handle staffing.
And yet, you are planning with the town manager.
Correct.
Not planning with them.
You're not planning with them? Well, that's interesting.
I'm making the motion to have-
Well, did you have a guy have a discussion with them?
Yeah, we did our due diligence with them, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about.
Talked to them, yes.
So you've got a department, which has a budget of $286,000, of which, that zoning administrator is a minuscule part, with 15% maybe?
Seventeen, 72,000, yeah.
72,000, 15,000, 72,000.
That is-
Oh, that's right, that's right, it's only part of the year, okay, sorry. So, you know, that raises a few eyebrows, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, yeah, it is a tough decision.
A little bit here.
A, what, is it regarding, is this going to be part-time?
Yes, so, so Vito, the, the revenue on that is short-term rentals, which, actually, Linda does the majority of the work on the short-term rentals.
The zoning administrator doesn't.
She, the zoning administrator does.
That's not true.
It is true, I see it every day. So, the, the other thing is, too, if you looked at the budget from FY25, which we just ended, for the zoning minister's actual rev, or actual salary, or actual pay was $52,000, it was oversp-
The budgeted, sorry.
The budgeted was $52,000, the actual was 72, so they went over budget, and nobody knows why. So if that was in any other department, there would be concern. And, and for the, what was there, 73, 72 permits written last year? So that's about a permit in a half a week.
So if you didn't have Jim there, you would've been losing money on your permits-
No, we wouldn't, we just, three people in the zoning department.
I understand, but who told you about the permits?
I looked them up.
No, Jim told you that it was costing us money to do the permits?
Didn't tell me that.
So you raised the price of permits.
Actually, I asked Will to look them up for me, say, how many permits did we write last year? And it was 73.
Anyway, when Jim started at that job, you were taking in $6,800.
Again, we're talking about the position, not Jim.
Okay, the position is Jim. So, the position, this year, has taken in $281,985.
The department has taken it.
The department has taken it in.
Yep.
When people call about the zoning, and Jim goes online and sees whose house is doing, what's doing, and he goes to the houses, does the permits, he also is in charge, you, when he gets a million phone calls every day, when he's not working at the office. I think you're getting a bargain is what you're getting, to be honest with you. If he wasn't in that office, would we know that we had two telephone carriers?
I would hope he would, because that's.
No, he didn't pick it up over a year.
Well, I would hope that'd be him acting as a select board member.
No, he picked it up working in that office.
Okay.
You understand? So, you guys will have like AT&amp;T and Verizon for over a year, you would pay them. And if he didn't pick that up, there's more to what he does than what you're saying.
We're not talking about the person that is in the board.
I think you're foolish, that's what I think. I mean, if you guys would have ran, you said you were running on transparency and orders, if you would have ran on, I think I'll screw Jim half and his family, I don't think you would have got voted in, okay? And the other thing is, two of you guys are going to be up in six or seven months, good luck. I think you're being totally foolish. I think you're cutting off your nose to spite your face, that's what I think.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else have questions? Part-time position, online? All right. So, again, to the board, the.
All right, I have one question quickly, Patrick.
Sorry.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
The part-time position, I know you guys only have control over a very slight few things from the board's perspective, and.
Yes.
And the rest of the appointments are through the town manager. But, you know, one of the things I think that a lot of people in the public could ask for is to do these kind of like broader looks at where like savings could happen.
We are.
And so, if you're looking at planning and zoning and the people in those positions, and you have, you know, essentially three full-time people, and that right now, with Will as a part-time, you know, it might make more sense to go and like look at the whole department, you know, right? Rather than just the tiny piece that you guys have control over, which is one person.
Yeah, and we do.
And that one person happens to bring in a lot of money, whereas the planning side doesn't. It's just the nature of the job. But like, if you had, you know, if you were looking at it holistically, and you've since given that role to, you know, with the first motion, to Dave Atherton, now he has more of the control to like look at that as a holistic thing. It may not be just the person you can control that is the best decision for the town in these positions. And so, if you pump the brakes a second, and like look at the department now as a whole, and whether you do the whole audit or just this little department audit, you could kind of see who makes sense where and where the value is. And now that Dave has control over all of that, and he's your proxy, he can look at that holistically, rather than jump a little too quickly on one person that you have control.
Well, again, that's why this is, we're making a recommendation, and if the planner, who's the department head, and Dave, who's the town manager, come back and say, bad call, then we'll listen to, we can listen to that. This is making the recommendation of what we, or what, the motion I'm making right now is what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that that, again, that triad is a vertical silo right now, right? Like, they're kind of split with the check and balance, as I currently understand it. And so, to see it as a silo is maybe incorrect, and then also, like, you know, before you make these recommendations to look at it holistically, is just the recommendation I'm asking you guys to consider before moving forward, too quickly on like one piece of the puzzle.
All right, thank you, Polly.
Is that involved with the budget that we're doing now? Are you redoing the budget, or is this already baked into the budget?
I'm not following.
His pay.
So, pay for?
I mean, you.
2020.
You didn't ask for the job, they asked him to take the job from the planning commission.
Right.
So, yeah, they did. But anyway.
He was nominated by the planning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you guys, well, you weren't there, but the select board one.
I understand, sure.
It's not like you interviewed for the job or anything like that, they just asked him. So, he does the job, does a very successful job.
Yeah, no one's saying that.
Then we should just get rid of him, that's. What would happen is, I've owned real estate here for years, what happens is, the CEOs are on top of all the houses. There's a lot of, you know what I'm saying, this town, and he's straightening it out, and then you're going to get rid of him, and it's going to go back to what it was.
Well, to be clear, we're not getting rid of him, we're not saying he did a bad job, we are talking solely about the position, and by no means does anyone on this board take lightly that you're affecting someone's income, you're affecting someone's benefits. It is not a fun thing to do. But, up here on this board, you're responsible to the taxpayers. And if we are seeing oversight, or if we're seeing lack of oversight, or if we're seeing overspending, I'm going to make a motion, even though I may not want to.
You're looking for the taxpayer, but he's taking in $281,000, and his salary's $72.
The department is taking it in.
So, the department's making $210,000 that he set up.
And I'm hoping that we can save another $50,000.
So, which other person you're going to cut?
What's that?
Which other person you're going to cut?
We're going to be looking at all through the town, different departments, different, like, we're going to be looking at all, because we need to be tighter. Like, we're talking, we're going to talk about finances in a little bit more, but it's not just this department, we're going to look wider, because it isn't a targeted thing, it's a financial decision.
Well, a lot of setups like the fire department and police, sounds nice.
Just a quick question on this.
I want to take away his benefit.
You know, the budget was prepared for a vote by the town.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering, how does that work when the town voted on the budget, on this position's salary, approved by the voters, and you guys turn around first thing.
Well, I'm going to correct you real quick, Vito.
Cut his salary.
What is voted on, what is voted on is the bottom line number of the budget, we don't vote on individual lines. We used to, with salaries when we had town halls, we used to stand up.
Why do you wish on those books?
Transparency.
Right, transparency, and people look at those books, and they read them, and they would, based upon that information that contained in those.
We're going to talk more, we're going to talk more about the budget later, none of us were here when that was written. I have concerns with next year's budget, a lot of it in the revenue column, I have concerns. So, we'll talk about it, but right now, we're focusing on the zoning administration reverting to a part-time hour position, and if there's no more questions on that specifically?
Well, no, because, again, you just, you just said something, none of yous were here. I'm sitting here thinking, we have three new select board members that.
Four.
Where's the fourth?
Four of us.
Well, okay, I did not realize that you were.
Mark, thank you.
Okay, so we have four, well, I know the fifth is out sick.
Fifth's out sick, yeah.
But, this board is rushing to a decision when I personally have some qualms, because look, I ran for select board years ago.
Okay.
And, we're talking about transparency. I'm looking at this, when a man is down, he's getting stabbed in the back. Two, Jim Haff said something about the golf course a long time ago, and he was 100% correct. He saved us town a boatload of money and stopped a lot of bad things from happening.
This vote is not about Jim Haff.
Well, it is, because it is.
It is.
It's a man's position in a man's livelihood.
With a straight face.
Because we're talking about a position.
And it's not Jim Haff's position.
Come on, man. No, because I'm going to make a little bit of a statement here. Because I was very upset with Abby, and I'm looking at us cutting a man that has been in that town hall, and you could call him up, I called pretty much most of these selectmen right there, and not one of them picked up their phone. I can guarantee you, you call Jim Haff, he picks up, I don't leave messages.
I've never gotten a call from you since then.
Ricky, I get your number on my, on my desk.
I haven't had to pull this back.
Well, we're not going to pull this back, you're going to listen to the public.
Sal, I'd like to make your point.
Okay, my point is, we're rushing to a decision before weighing all this other avenues to cut this money that you need to cut. I'm a business owner, I understand about making tough choices. I also understand about being fiscal responsible. You have a job, you have to do it.
Yep.
The way this is going is not the way I think is correct, okay? The man has saved a lot of money in this town, he's put a lot of townspeople, has he rubbed rubab? Oh, you better believe it, okay? I'm good at it myself. The thing is, this should be tabled until the man can be here to stand up and defend himself.
I agree on that, too.
Because this is doing something behind the man's back, not giving him a chance to come. He had a medical reason for not being here, that should be taken into consideration, and this should be tabled to the next meeting, where the man can stand up and, for his own, because.
And we've, I've talked to Jim about this, he knows that this is happening, I understand he has the medical, and we also said to him that if he wants to address it at a later meeting, we'll absolutely hear it.
Yeah, but if you put a motion, and we want to do it, then what's the sense of that?
And as this is a position, this is about the position, this is about a fiscal decision, we're going to now put it to a vote, unless Polly, is your hand still up? I'll give you one last.
Yeah, sorry, I have one just clarifying question, Patrick.
Yeah.
So, there, you had mentioned that there's Will, who's also half-time zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So, the reduction in half-time zoning, is it possible that comes from Will, or are we exclusively talking about Jim's job?
We are talking about the zoning administrator position, he is not the zoning administrator, he is the assistant to the zoning administrator. So, we're talking, because we can't touch.
But you're talking about a half-time position in zoning, right?
We, yes, creating, or reverting back to, yes.
Reducing a half of a zoning position.
Yes.
So, that could come from Will, then?
It could, you could take it from anywhere, but this board does not have that authority, the board has this authority.
Okay, so you're just totally talking about Jim's position.
We're talking about the zoning administrator position, yes.
Which Jim?
Which Jim occupies.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Yes, okay. All right, so, the motion on the floor is recommend that the zoning position, zoning administrator position revert to part-time hour position. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One last motion that's involved in this is, in doing this due diligence, reading all the material, the handbook for the zoning administrator, 2025, was released in May, it suggests, no, it doesn't suggest, it says that you should, for continuity of government, also identify a secondary person to be the acting zoning administrator, if the zoning administrator is unavailable, on vacation, sick, you need to have redundancy. So, I would like to make a motion instructing the planning commission to nominate an acting zoning mission for the reasons of continue of government purpose and reflect good practices as identified by the 2025 zoning administrator handbook. And we want to discuss that.
Did you just write that handbook, May of 2025?
The town, or the state wrote that.
The state wrote that.
Yeah, it is publicly available online. It's, yeah, sorry, it is not a town, no.
Are you hiring someone to do that?
I would like, I would hope not, I would like the.
Hopes.
Again, it is not.
Hopes and dreams are different, you know, okay?
It is not the select board's prerogative to recommend who should be in that position.
So, you're going to hire, you're going to cut someone down and hire someone else?
If, I mean, if.
Well, it was.
Hold on, hold on, I'm telling you, if that is the solution from the planning commission, it's not going to get passed this board. We should, my recommendation would be to find an individual internally to act as that when the zoning administration administrator is unavailable to do so. It is just a good practice, it's a continuation of government, and I'm not talking about, I really hope, after going through this, that the planning commission would not come to us and say, we're going to create a whole position, new claw, because that would not fly. So, this is the motion on the floor.
I think it's a position you need, but that's my personal opinion.
It is a position we need, 100%, we need the zoning administrator, we need the acting zoning administrator for continue of government issues. We don't want to get stuck where if the zoning administrator is unavailable, no one can act on that, because even though we have a assistant zoning administrator, they don't have the authority of the zoning administrator. And that's.
So, why do we have the assistant zoning?
Workplace. And that was deemed before my time.
So, why don't you get rid of the zoning assistant? Don't keep the zoning person.
Again, we've talked about that.
That's getting the job.
We've talked about that, we do not have authority to do that. So, right now, the motion on the floor is to request that the planning commission nominate an acting zoning administrator for continue of government purposes and reflect good practices identified in 2025. Assistant, no, sorry, acting, no, it's called acting in the handbook. So, you have a zoning, and then you have an acting, if, yeah.
Could we have a little more clarity on what exactly that means?
Sure.
An acting zoning administrator would be in fact, if the zoning administrator's not available?
Correct.
Or is it a position that's, he's sitting in the back, he or she is sitting in the background getting paid, and steps in when the zoning administrator's.
It's going to be, depending on how the town sets it up, but what the purpose of the position is, is that if you, if your zoning administrator, who has enforcement authority, is unable to perform those duties because they're on vacation, they're sick, whatever.
Or they're only part-time.
They, you know, go somewhere, they're only part-time, then they're temporarily.
Go back on this.
So, they're temporarily to do that, yes.
So, the person who's going to step in those shoes needs to know what is going on with zoning, and needs to know all the bylaws, and, you know, like they're back of the hand.
Correct.
You can't just step into that position.
Right.
Without knowing what the hell, there's a lot to know.
So, we have a zoning commission that needs to identify that person, and hopefully we have someone in town that is acting as an assistant. But, and if not, then it's time that whoever is going to take that role, they need to learn it. We never want to put someone in a role where they're not ready for it, and if someone's not ready for a role, you train them for it.
Okay, and that's, that you have to pay for that, right?
Not necessarily. Sorry, Patrick.
Yeah.
Not at all, like, there's already people in the office that could fill in if someone's out sick or whatever.
Well, could you, could you name one?
I could do it, because I was zoning administrator in two towns for years, so, yes, I could easily sign a permit.
You're a town manager, and you're going to be the zoning administrator.
I don't want to be the zoning administrator, but.
And you're going to be your own boss.
If I needed to sign a permit.
There's no conflict of interest.
You're not even, you're not listening to me, Vito.
Vito, Vito.
No, no, I want to know if there's a conflict of interest if he's his own boss, you know?
I'd like you to lower your voice, and we will talk, but we're not going to yell in this meeting.
Yeah, well, you don't answer questions when, when people talk in a normal tone of voice. You just be around the bush.
I am, I'm sorry you feel that way, Vito.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
I, yeah, me too. But, to answer your question.
Can he answer my question, please?
I'm going to answer.
Instead of, you know, worrying around Rosie here about my behavior, how about?
Hey, Vito.
How can he be his own boss?
All right, so I'm going to call a vote to that. If there's anyone online, you did not get a choice, you have, or not a choice, you didn't get an opportunity. Would anyone on the third motion, which is to have the zoning, the planning commission identify an acting zoning administrator, which is good practice across the state? It's nothing new. Nope? All right, so the motion on the floor, all in favor?
And answer the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Transparency.
All opposed?
Yeah.
Nope, ayes have it. That concludes the section.
Circus.
Going to move to the next one.
Looking at holes.
Thank you. Everyone, thank you, I know it gets heated, but I do appreciate the input, and I do appreciate that we not get always see eye to eye.
It's fine, it's a matter of.
There's a vote coming up, we have direct democracy, if you want to get something like this changed, you can put a petition together, get the signatures, and get it on the ballot. One way to affect.
Or we can just vote people out.
Or you can vote people out, but one way to affect change in the zoning administrative pay is by having a public vote, those are the two ways, it's by select board or public vote. We have always done it by select board, so, if you do feel this is not the end-all be-all, there's other opportunities, and I'm sorry that it's affected everyone's.
Unfortunately, Patrick, the select board is biased.
Okay. All right, and we're moving on to board of water commissioners ad. I don't know what that is.
Well, Abby's here, it looks like she just unmuted, if she wants to introduce it, or I can, it's up to her.
Hi there, so, the water ordinance has taken effect, as of, I think it was the end of June, it took effect. The next step is for the select board to appoint a board, a board of water commissioners. So, I put together an ad for the five vacancies, and just presenting it to you all for your awareness, and if you have any comments, anything you would like to change.
So, I guess, make a motion to accept the water commissioner's ad as written, can I get a motion?[1632.16]
Ask a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this posting?
I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, first, I see there's no mention of a Killington residency requirement anywhere on this for a Killington commission, so I'm, I'm just wondering, how come?
There actually is, Bill.
There is?
Says at least three members shall own or lease property that will be connected to the Killington.
Yeah, own or lease is not, that's not residency.
If they own out there.
Yeah.
Just got all property.
Half the houses are all owned by out of state.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
There's a separate distinction between residency and ownership. It is slight, but what he is saying is factually correct. Do you know, Abby, do you know if in the ordinance, if it's the same language, that it's own?
It's the same.
Actually, and that was the other question I had, okay, 'cause the ordinance actually has different language than the ad, okay, and I think the ordinance was written assuming the water system was operating, okay, whereas the ad is obviously for, for people to inform the commission before the system's operating. So for instance, it says at least three members shall own or lease property that will be connected, is in the ad, okay, and, and in the general provisions, it says own or lease property that is connected. So the question I would ask is for the water commissioners who would be in this particular round, would, would the town put a finite time period after they have the ability to connect to the water system to actually physically have their property connected?
There is in the ordinance, it says that within 12 months of the water being available, they must connect, and if they don't, then they need to pay a buyer suppression fee.
You know, I was looking specifically at, at the section, the section in the audience, in the ordinance concerning the water commission, section 1-101.
What, what, sorry, I didn't catch that.
Section 1-101, I'm sorry. There's, there's no specific mention of timing in that, because that assumes that the people are physically connected, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so it is a little disjointed.
It's, it's disjointed, okay, so I mean, it's just kinda like, I mean, if, I would feel comfortable to say that, that a commissioner would have a year to connect or whatever, or a year to.
Once available.
Once available, right, okay. Yeah, and if they don't connect after that, then I think you got some issues that you need to deal with.
Right, I think that's fair. Although, this hasn't gone out or anything, has it, Abby?
It has not.
Okay, right, 'cause we're talking about. How, how do you think you'd word that in here, or where would you add that?
Well, the line says at least three members shall own or lease property that will be connected, okay, and you could say within 12 months of availability.
Okay.
Yeah, as an example, you could pick it up, I mean, the time is obviously arbitrary based upon, okay, but I think the thing is you need to make clear that.
If you're on here.
If you're on there, you gotta be connected to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I mean, do you have any other suggestions or edits that you think should be made?
No, I think that's fine.
How about you guys, anything with this? Abby, how do you feel as, you know, doing the wire, does, does that track with you?
Yep, that makes sense. It's not really arbitrary, 'cause we do reference the 12 months for connections.
Right, so it's just kinda reiterating what's already in the policy, okay. So do you, how about we make a motion to accept it with the change of adding that they will be connected within 12 months of availability?
Okay, so I move to accept the, the water commissioner's ad, okay, with, with the change that the members of the water commission must be connected to the system within 12 months after availability at their property?
Yeah, all right, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question on, who's gonna, who's gonna do the oversight of this commission? Whose jurisdiction is this?
The select, the select board.
Once again, thank you.
Yep. All right, Abby, do you have anything else? Water system or ads? Or is that, that was the only thing on that item?
I think that was it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna keep on moving. Pull up my agenda again. If we, if we have questions on that, I'll a hundred percent take them, I'm still getting my sea legs with remembering that.
Can I have some?
No, excellent. Next one up is compost incentive discussion. We have, Anne?
Yeah, hi. Anne, go to the floor, Anne. I had some discussion with Jay Hickory and just my own observation at the transfer station is that it could be a little bit more clear about composting and giving an incentive for people to compost, and I did find a document on the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation about composting, and I'm hoping that we could have what is an eight half by 11 blown up to maybe a two foot by three foot sign, position it over by where the trash receptacle is, so that we're educating the people who are just throwing their compost into the trash to try to encourage them to get on with composting instead. So I did check for pricing to have something like this produced that would be outdoors in all types of weather and could remain up for the year or years to come for $40 to have each page reproduced, and there is a cost, I mean, it is the law in the state of Vermont that since 2020, that universal recycling law prohibits the disposal of food scraps in the trash, and I just don't think people are understanding that completely, unless Jay tells them on a one-by-one basis, so.
Okay, thank you. I think we, can we look into that, I mean, I don't know what the budget is for zoning, but I don't think we need to necessarily take action on that, do we? I mean, there's a motion, but can we have, can we look into signs or education about composting?
Yeah, so there, I mean, there is signage there now that comes from Casella. It tells you, you know, what you can and what you can't. The issue more is that people aren't doing what they should do, they're not. I mean, homeowners, I mean, condo associations especially, they're, they do nothing for composting.
Right.
It's a hard thing to police.
I know we've caught black with this, the Texas a few times.
I, I have no problem, I mean, I think it's a good idea to put up more signage like this to see if you can get people to do the right thing, but you can't make them do the right thing, is the problem.
What about giving out a handout when someone gets a dump card or dump their sticker each year, so they, or they have one?
It's posted at two different places at the transfer station, and it's also, I tell everybody it's on the website, so that both of the signages we have at the dump are also online for people to refer to.
There was also some discussion with Patrick on the way in that the transfer station does get fined by, if the state of Vermont.
Oh, definitely.
Gets fined, that maybe we could have some sort of sign that says not fined since January 2024. You know, just so that everyone's on board with, you know, not fined for compost, you know, regulations since January 2024, and that might kind of have an all-person effort to try to make it so that we're not fined since a certain date.
So the state does come to the transfer station once a year, and.
Okay.
They have been there before when it was, I, I've never seen them there when the transfer station was open since I've been there. They did come there, oh, once, I think, when Jim was there.
Oh, so it's not something regular?
If they see recycling in the trash, then that, they can fine you for that. If they see compost in the trash, they can fine you for that. If they find compost in the recycling, they can fine you for that, and they're not, they're quite stiff fines actually.
Okay, so if we play around the idea of getting some, some more signage, looking at that, and then maybe come back in, you know, a month or so, to a meeting or two? That's where I would be then, or just do it, 'cause that's under.
Yeah, we can probably just do it.
Well, I mean, we can, we can make the signs up to a certain size and eliminate them ourselves, that's what the ones that's, that's what the transfer station are now.
All right, yeah, so can we look at?
Just if you want something bigger, then you'd have to do it elsewhere.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I like the idea of no, no fine for, you know, two years, three years.
When we get fined, you put one of those up?
Then you got it, yeah. No fine since, you know, last week.
Possible turn the air conditioning up, please? It's a little warm in here.
Defer to the, the, the managers of the building, can we do that, or is it?
I'm glad we're out there, all the way there is in here.
It's hot in here.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, next one is gonna be review town highway excavation permit.
So the town highway, like excavating in the town highway, this permit is kinda lengthy, and it requires the road foreman, the public works director's approval, and the Killington select board's approval, so Kevin and I went and looked at the site, it's on Brad Mead Road, these people are putting a house in, they're actually doing it, they've had it engineered, and I have the site plans here if anyone wants to see them, they're doing an inch and a half force main to tie into the Alpine Pipeline. Kevin and I, like I said, we went up and looked at it, we just had a couple stipulations that the, you know, the permit is responsible for repairs of the road right away, all disturbed areas must be restored to the original condition, town will be held harmless of damage, and the foreman will make the final inspection on work performed, so looking for board approval on that.
All right, can I make a motion for approval as written for the Romano?
Yeah.
For the Romano, application of town highway excavation. Can I get, so can I get a motion on that?
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions regarding this, wanna see the plans, anything?
So this will be in the summer, I mean.
They're probably gonna do it.
Right away.
Momentarily, yeah.
So it'll be a wonder thing.
Okay, cool. All right, so all in favor of passing the application for town highway excavation for the Romanos, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstained, none. All right, next one, public works update FEMA and TIF. Is it coming from you or to Abby?
Oh, Abby.
Hi there. So you were provided with an update of flood recovery and TIF projects in your packet. I can go down through and give a quick summary. We still have the eight category C projects, we've received about a million dollars of the 1.7 million that, that have been obligated, 555,000 of that has been used to repay the flood recovery note that we took out for this event. The highway department is finishing up gravel and ditch repair on the side roads, and we're continuing to work with end and cussing and heritage engineering to design a number of projects. One of those projects is a culvert on trailside drive, which we anticipate putting that project up to bid this week, and hoping the project will start by September 1st and finish by November 1st of this year. On TIF projects, water construction, we met with the contractors today for contracts 1 through 3A, and originally, we were anticipating that they would pour the cap for the tank on July 18th, but now it's looking like it's gonna be sometime next week instead. And then a very large generator, which is gonna be delivered to the pump station on Route 4, that was originally planned for July 21st, but is likely to occur a little bit later than that. Water contract 4, they will be starting up again, this isn't in here, but they will be starting up again on Wednesday. We have been meeting with them about primarily the small sinkhole that occurred in front of the lookout tavern, but a few other areas where the pavement has been settling and getting them to address those quickly.
Yeah, Abby, quick question, sorry, quick question on that, the, was, where, where was that sinkhole?
If you go up to the lookout tavern, you'll see like a square dirt patch in the driveway, right in the entrance.
Upper driveway, okay. So it wasn't in the road, it was off to the side?
Right, right, it was in the entrance.
In his actual, okay, all right. Cool, thank you.
Yeah, contracts 5, 6A, and 7, really no changes since the last report. Road construction, phase 1B, the consolidated lines finally came down, looks like today, so that should be starting up again soon, finishing removing the poles and the bankwork and the cobblestone. Phase 1A, we are reviewing a second, second amendment from VHB for their engineering contract, and that they have advised us that we should have a hundred percent design plans by the end of this, this month. And then phases 2 to 4, we have started working with Ken Roby from Du Bois and King, who is starting to do the background research and preparing an RFP for design services. On the water system, just general updates, we did have the public meeting on June 16th with prospective users, providing them with details on next steps, and then we have hired a water operator, Brian Heaton, who is going to be starting on July 21st, and his initial duties will be to get familiar with the new water system and coordinating the effort to connect users to the system.
So, I got a question, can we go back to those cobblestones for a moment? Were those, the cobblestones?
I'm sorry, it's a little muffled.
The cobblestones on the right-hand side of the access road. Were those, were those in the contract from day one?
I, I didn't catch part of that.
Were those in the contract from day one?
Those were in the contract from day one, yes.
And we are gonna be removing those, that, you know, I understand that right?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure when we, we did talk about that a few select board meetings ago, it might have been before it was a five-member board.
And then what will, what will happen to keep cars from getting to the walkway? Is it, there gonna be a guardrail?
We're putting up bollards in the Killington Sports parking lot, one on either side of the walkway, hoping it looks narrow enough and is narrow enough that a car cannot get through and enter the walkway.
I mean.
Doesn't work, but another idea that we have is to paint a white line strip down the middle to make it clear it's not, it's a pedestrian bicycle path, not.
So my question actually is, Abby, from the, from the roadway to the, to keep separation between the traffic and the public?
We are trying with the grass strip first, we haven't.
I know, yeah.
We haven't got any further.
So I think.
Trying with the grass strip first to make sure it's clear.
Get concerns.
So, one of the problems.
Why don't you?
You can say about curbing.
One of the problems with putting curbing on Jay is the way that the water sheds off the road, if you look at the road when you're driving up, the water tilts towards that ditch for drainage, and that's, it was designed that way, 'cause we actually asked that question if we could do a curb or something raised, and it's, it would, we'd have to put drainage in in order to make that work, so it'd have to be something above the ground that would allow water to go through.
Yeah, so like a guardrail would.
Problem.
What do you have in the curb by Chris's place, where they have the black lights? You're getting flooding down?
The curb by Chris's place?
Which Chris?
When they built the sidewalks, they did one section by the factory.
Oh, we're down further, we're on one.
No, I'm saying, the way he's, it's set up over there.
Hopefully not.
I don't know if it is.
Yeah, so that's.
That, that's a curb that goes across.
Yeah, that one's going.
You should try to get uni, I mean, they did it three different sections, but all three are different.
Yeah, right.
Which is weird, so.
Yeah.
You have black lights, you have low light.
That's a different project, it's gonna be, actually, when Abby was talking about working with Ken Roby from Du Bois and King, they will pick a design engineer for that project to design that.
Yep, yep. All right, so right now, there's no, the mitigation for car-to-pedestrian area is grass median.
No, I'm just stopping.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was spacing out there.
So I'm saying, so right now, the, the plan is remove the cobblestones and just put in grass, and that is the median to prevent.
There's no curb there now, so there's nothing that's higher than the road.
Right.
Actually, the cobbles are, you know, just as lower than the, the ride course of the pavement, so.
Okay.
But, why aren't we putting a curb there? And then.
So the problem with that, Sal, is the way, like I was explaining earlier, the way the road's pitched, the way it drains, it drains into that ditch on the surface.
Right.
So it'd have to all be dug up and re-drained, it'd have to put pipe in and drainage and drop inlets and, so.
Not really.
Yeah.
Put a swill right where that cobblestone is.
It'd still have to go somewhere, though, and that's the problem, you look at that bank that's on the other side of it.
It's a lot of water.
That's a lot of water. You guys got a lot of water when it rains up here.
Right, but it all goes down to the bottom by, on the, the shop, and normally floods that corner anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I've nev, in all the years I've been here, I've never seen that corner not flood.
Yeah. It wasn't a great design.
I don't know, I think, because I think the culvert that goes under Route 4 right there was undersized, and Markowski upsized that last year, replaced it last year for the state, so hopefully that doesn't continue to happen.
All right, well, we will keep an eye on it then, does anyone else have questions related to waterline, road construction, TIF, Killington Forest?
Yeah, I'd be careful by the ski thing, 'cause people turn in there before you did that, okay? I've seen people in that ditch quite often, now you're making, that looks like.
I've seen people go up there quite a bit.
It really looks like, they did it without it.
Yeah.
I mean, they've driven into Chris's pond over there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They just turn the wrong way.
Yeah.
But if they turn, if you keep it that way, and you're having to go through that way, people are gonna think that's a driveway to get into the business.
Yeah, all right.
One other question.
Yes.
What's going on with all the cobblestone?
That's our time, it's gonna get pulled out, you mean, what is the, what is happening with the cobblestone itself?
Yeah, is it?
Oh, I don't know, Abby, do you know?
Markowski is currently looking for somebody who would be willing to take a salvage value.
That'd be interesting.
Five thousand square feet of it, I think, yeah.
So I think, maybe we can get Sal and Markowski connected, if he's expressing So I think maybe we can get Sal and Markowski connected if he's expressing interest.
I have one more question. What's the timeline of all this being done?
Divert to you guys.
We just signed a change order with Markowski last week for this, this particular project should be finished by the end of this month.
No, I'm talking about the whole TIF thing together.
We're waiting for the consolidated lines to come down, but.
So, so all of, all of?
The whole project.
The whole.
Once is going to be, you know, once, two weeks left is to be done. Is there a timeline or?
Well, water contract one through three A should, will be finished this fall, final, final construction by mid-October. Water contract four finished by the end of 2026 and we're planning to bid out the road, phase one A, up in the area of the resort this fall. So some of that work will be happening simultaneous to some of the water work. Not sure what the end date is on that. I would say a couple of construction seasons at least. And then phases two through four, I'm trying to remember the dates on that. I think that we need to have the money obligated by 2028.
Yep.
I think that's.
Twenty-eight.
Definitely.
So you think twenty-eight?
So, because that raise grant was on hold for a while, so we just got that back, so that's, but they didn't change the timeline. So we have to have it obligated by twenty-eight and construction, I think, within two years after that, if I remember.
We're done like 2030.
Another thing you want to do is, because they do it with the sewer lines, when people tap into it, they do repave the road, but it sinks. So you should have something in your thing if you're doing that, that if it does sink, you're responsible for cleaning it back up.
I think we talked about that of having it to the standard, the state standard, I remember you talking about that before, Abby, but yeah, that's a, that's a start.
This thing is here actually.
We're going to unpave the whole road.
I mean. That's going to be from.
Kind of the same thing, an excavation.
That's what we're talking about, we have to have it obligated by 2028 and then complete within two years after that. So anytime between the next year or so, we may start and hopefully have it finished by 2030, or else, you know, we'll get into getting money issues, but yeah.
Yep, that's the plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions online about TIF or water, Killington Forward, all the big projects? Seeing none, we're going to move on. All right, we are to.
Financial reports.
Financial reports, town and golf.
So Monica and Peggy are both at a conference this evening, so in your package, you'll see there's the comparative budgets for everything, there's the treasures report, there's the restricted funds for the town and the current status. If there's any questions? It's more, more for your review, obviously, anytime there's a question, give me a shout, we'll try to answer it.
Is this another one that I have to make a motion token to talk about? Or we're not accepting anything?
There's nothing to really accept, so.
Yeah, okay.
Again.
Still learning. I do have a few questions. I know we talked about some of them, but I'm going to just bring them up for the rest of the board. On the first page, under total, like on the revenues, the very first page under revenue, where the first part of taxes. Oh, sorry, town.
On the NIMRIC one.
Yeah, NIMRIC one.
Someone Bill doesn't like one.
This one?
Bill's, Bill's leaf's favorite, yeah. So on the NIMRIC side itself, that, I did like the breakdown, I will say, I like that top breakdown. I do, I have some concerns of just, it was for my own education and Dave did try to help me understand, the municipal tax rate, sorry, the municipal tax budgeted was like four, four million eight hundred and change. We, we were under what was expected with the interest and penalties added in, we're under that while still collecting basically six hundred thousand money that we did not budget for. So my question was, how is the municipal taxes short six hundred thousand dollars? And he said, I mean, your solution to that, well, one, you can look into it more, but also if, if people are delinquent, if, there's a couple of other reasons.
So, yeah, I mean, we just sent out delinquent notices and what's our, what are we at, like two, two sixty for delinquent amounts, is that? Yeah, so.
There's that. So there's that portion of it.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, there were some revenue lines that just weren't correct, they weren't accurate.
Okay.
We're going to have that problem this year too.
Yeah. And then the other question was, again, I asked him this earlier, but it was about the, there's a line in there on total benefits at the bottom, let me see what page that is. Go. It's not going. It would be where the total revenue is.
Page three.
Thank you. There is in the, this is still in revenue, in the budgeted revenue, there was a carryover of three hundred thousand dollars budgeted and nothing actualized. And I was wondering what that was, and you were going to look into that.
There were two, we were going, Mona and I looked into another one today too, so we'll see what it is, but you know, a couple of these were, were kind of shaking our.
Yeah, because it looks like there was budgeted to receive three hundred thousand dollars carried forward, but also we were short three hundred something thousand.
Three fifty.
Three fifty, which need to be accounted for in this tax, 2026, why it bumped it up about three percent.
Six hundred thousand dollar swing.
Yeah, so I don't know how we had a, had both directions on that, if we could look into that, and thank you for doing that. The next one is right under that, first line in expenses, it's actually above the expenses line, where it says unexpended project funds, negative one hundred forty-seven thousand.
So again, I know I'm not supposed to say this in the meeting, but I had nothing to do with this budget and I'm just trying to understand it and we, again, Mona and I have looked at this one today and the, we, the only thing that we could come up with is, Mona remembers that when this number was put in there, it shouldn't have a minus in front of it, but can't seem to figure out what it's for.
Yeah, it's weird to have a negative expense, which is a revenue.
Right, that would be a revenue.
Right.
Yes. So that's another one we're, we're questioning. I mean, I have a couple, if you don't mind, I'd like, was trying to figure out.
I have one more.
Okay.
But thank you. The, the other one is in the other income section, so I guess it's back up top on page one. I have some concerns, and again, this is why we're kind of paying more attention to fiscal year. It is page, yeah, page one, under total taxes where it's other income. Those numbers on the right-hand side for the budget of next year, like we're budgeting a hundred forty-five thousand from the golf course, and it's not reflected anywhere else.
So we, we found this last week, Mona and I, wondering where it was from. One was because the golf admin account, which is right above it, went from thirty-six thousand to seventy-two. Well, that's admin right there, so basically the golf was giving, you know, the town office money to do their, their stuff, basically. So, but no, we don't recall ever anyone asking for that number to go up. But then this one, the golf transfer, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, if you go through the golf budget, there is nothing in there that shows an expense as a hundred and five, forty-five thousand dollars to the, to the town. So those numbers right there, and actually there's the third one too that's in there, the housing land payment, that was for the, you know, the land, the seven, the seventy acre lot here, like that was for a special project that shouldn't show in our budget as revenue, because now next year, when that number's gone, we're going to lose a two hundred ten thousand dollar revenue line that's really going to screw the budget up for, for next year. That should have been as like a special project type situation and not as a.
One-time cash.
Not as a revenue in your, in your current budget, because it's really not, so.
So, so with all this, those, I'm just bringing, my concerns as we get into this next fiscal year is even though on the expense side, like we're tightening up, I have concerns about our projected revenues being over by a significant amount.
It's concerning.
And I know that some of the departments had to go through, the police department I saw increased the ticket revenue from seven, six, seven thousand to twenty-five thousand without any increase in staff. And so I don't know how realistic, same thing with the rec department got increased, and I don't know how realistic it is to hit those revenue goals without any other change.
Right.
And so as we keep spending this year, I ask to keep that in mind, that it may not be a realistic goal.
I think I mentioned.
Sorry to say that.
Once before, like, I'd rather see us, like, our expense, our revenue lines being lower than we expect and our expense lines a little higher than we expect, because then if we have those issues, we're covered, you know, like, but, but inflating your, your revenue lines with nothing to back it up is going to just cause some trouble and, you know, we're just trying to get out of this trend of that. But those are, those are some areas of concern. Mona and I have been trying to figure out what some of these are for, just by expanding the lines, and some of them are not telling a lot for us, so we don't really know what the reasoning was behind it. We'll get there, but just wanted to make you guys aware too that we got to be careful this year.
Is there any, any questions from you guys? And then if you have your second?
No, that was it. That was the only one I was, wanted to talk about.
I had one about the salt, actually. I mean, I know you didn't do the budget, Dave, and that we weren't involved in that, but you said we're going to be taking care of the road up to Mountain Green now?
That's how I wrote it.
Why would you lower the salt budget if you know you're going to do that? I mean, considering they went over by thirty-seven thousand dollars this year alone, it makes, doesn't really make sense.
Yep, I agree.
We're all on the same page that.
Yep. This is not like an area where you can do salt reduction.
No, it's not, especially up there.
Right. Yeah.
I think it's going to be problematic.
Yeah. Well, and just looking at some of these lines that, you know, you saw the budget go over from the fiscal year we just closed, like, I mean, just, and then you like look at the, the budget comparison that I think we, we gave you guys the last time that had FY24 on it as well, like even trending, some of those numbers, like, wait a minute, you know, these are going up five thousand every year, why did, why was it budgeted for ten thousand less? You know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's some concerns.
Well, that's where I know is, as you keep looking into it, we, you know, we look forward to hearing more and more the individual line items that you think need to be changed and how the departments need to be adjusted. Because I think, I think that's important, we need to get, we, we need to understand how much we're actually spending, you know, because we're going to start going into, this group is going to have to start going into putting together a budget and without having valid or accurate data, it's impossible to do it.
Yeah, you got to have that history and like actually use it to your advantage to make the budget, I think, you know.
And we're all in the same blood urine in terms of, of the budget, so I think just looking at the line items and making the best judgment about what should be changed and what, and if money needs to be moved to a department or money needs to be taken away from a department, okay, we, we just got to make the best judgments on that.
Well, and I think, I think one thing too, listening to the department heads, like when we go through budgets, like, that's, that's helpful, you know, because then you hear what, you know, they're the ones spending it, they're going, they're going to know more than even me, you know, day to day is what, you know, what they need to run their department effectively and efficiently.
Nice to have versus need to have.
And I think.
I mean, it's definitely, there's that needs versus wants type of thing that we're going to have to look at, like, it's going to be a need for, and wants are going to be pretty slim.
Well, and the big thing too is, you know, we had an effective six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall coming into the year. Okay, we can't afford to do that again.
No.
Okay, you know, we, we just can't, I mean, that's, that was craziness.
Yep.
That was people not looking at what was being spent where.
Yep. Look forward to cracking down some more. Is it questions? Again, I think we had ours. Questions from the public regarding?
About the budget?
Budget, well, the, it's about the financial, current finance, we're not proposing a new budget as of yet, but yes.
What are the town employees' pay percentage towards the healthcare?
Very low. For, three percent? Three percent.
Teachers pay twenty.
Yeah.
State workers pay twenty.
Yeah.
Right now, you're at five hundred, who else my class is?
On top of your head. Classic place to lose.
Right now, you're at five hundred and forty thousand dollars and then three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents. How many employees do you have on the healthcare system?
I wouldn't know right off the top of my head, George.
Would you say around eighteen?
More than that.
Probably more than that.
Yeah, it'd be more than that.
Okay. Because I'm just saying, if it was eighteen, you'd spend a thirty thousand employee.
Right.
Because not every employee is on the healthcare.
Right, right. Well, one thing too is like the town never offered a buyout to incentivize people to not take the healthcare. Most towns do that where it's twenty percent of whatever, so like, I actually know a couple of people and the employees in the town that would have opted for a buyout instead of taking the insurance, which would save us, you know, eighty percent.
Save money, you know, if everyone, I mean, in common place, everyone's paying over twenty percent to get their healthcare. I mean, I pay a hundred percent because I own my own business, so that's that, you know what I mean? But.
Three percent's low.
What's the deductible on their healthcare?
It's a lot, it's a high deductible plan.
Any number?
I got to be honest with you.
About five thousand?
Oh, yes, yeah. I'd have to look the plan up.
Do you guys give them money towards that?
The town does, so this was done, again, before I got here.
All right.
There's a health reimbursement.
I'm just telling what's going on, yeah.
There's a health reimbursement.
You want to look at cutting things, that's where you should be cutting, propositions.
There's a health reimbursement plan that the town uses so that they allocate money for people through the year, but it's not, theirs at the end of the year, if they don't spend it, it goes back into.
They don't use the deductible, I get what you're saying, but they, most people do use the deductible, if they have healthcare.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you kind of do. But how much are we giving them?
Again, I'd have to look the numbers up.
Yeah, but I'd like to know about the two oh four oh one. The other thing I saw in your book too is in unemployment, your unemployment insurance is thirty-five thousand dollars. Sounds high to me, I don't know. I mean, you're a town manager, I don't have, I've had employees, but I never got near that number, I also don't have the amount of employees that you have. So are you hiring people in the summer for three or four months or six months and they're collecting six months on this unemployment? You know, it's things to look into if you want to lower the unemployment pool.
So there's a, there's a, there's a formula for it, and I, again, I'm like not even thinking insurance right now, but I can get that from the League of Cities and Towns, because it's based on how many employees we have, I believe what the salaries are, like, there's a whole.
It's also based on how many people are collecting.
Right, but I, as far as I know, like, I've, I've seen the VLCT things, I don't think we have anyone that would, is, has on unemployment, nor has there been.
Something you might want to look into that you lower.
Yeah. But I think it's based on employees and pay rates and how they do this one.
Thank you, George. And any other, any other questions?
Well, as we hear, going through this current budget and our finances, where are we on a new finance director?
Do you want to give an update on that?
Sure, that's actually, that's what I was going to. I was going to save it for my report, but I'll let you guys know. It's easy enough, so we did put it out, we posted the job on Indeed with, it's on the League of Cities and Towns website, there's a few other entities that we've sent it out to, so we've received actually probably eight resumes so far that are pretty strong, some are local, so we're running it until the 25th, same with our rec director, because Emily's going back to teaching, so we're running those at the same time, and we've actually had a, a really good, I'm, I'm impressed at the resumes we've received so far, so. So we'll, we'll probably talk about that next meeting, we're going to try to get a little hiring or interview committee set up with like someone from the rec committee and the board and obviously the rec director for that, and then Patrick and we got, we've got some, excuse me. Beth from the KPA is going to help us on the interview process for finance director too. So we've got, we've gotten some really good candidates so far, so we'll run it till the 25th and see how it, how it ends up and start interviewing.
And the next thing you'll have, the numbers of how much you're giving towards the deductible and the two oh four, correct?
Two oh four.
With two. Two hundred and four thousand dollars for the solar panels, which is kind of weird.
Oh, the solar panels, yes. I love that, yeah.
Are those in front of the Old Town Hall? I installed them.
I'm guessing the library.
Yeah, the library would be the only panels that I know of in town.
Oh, there's, aren't there some at the highway garage?
Well, I think the ones in question are the two-hundred-four thousand, are the town hall.
One at the town hall, one at the library.
What are you doing with that when you close that down?
What do you do with it?
Well, it's not closing down.
Yeah.
The town hall stayed open?
It's gonna be. It's gonna be rec, the rec department's gonna take the building over.
Be nice to, you know, cause you're doing project, to check if that soul is really working out for you.
Yeah.
You understand?
Absolutely.
Cause it probably isn't, and, um, don't build anymore, you know what I'm saying?
I agree with that.
I got you there. Um, alright, excellent, any questions online about finance, budget, anything like that? Alright, excellent. Moving on, we're gonna go to, uh, signing AP warrants, we have two warrants to sign. First one is gonna be, uh, sorry, this is postage and tax for one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-two, so can I get a motion for, uh, the warrant of one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-two point seventy-seven for postage, tax, and bills?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Just throw the other one, I'm just gonna pass that around.
Okay, is this the one?
Yeah, that's, that one, it's got that one too.
Okay, these are the ones to sign. Uh, the next one is gonna be a town warrant for checks and current prior and ex fiscal year invoices for a total of three-hundred-sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-forty-four and seventeen cents. Again, this is a lot of printing, billing, construction of town hall, um, you'll have a copy, do you have any questions on this? Nope, can I get a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, alright, um, so, I think, I forgot to say all in favor for that one.
Aye.
And now we can do this one.
Aye.
All in favor of this? Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
So, there's only two motion?
Yeah, there's only two warrants in this one. Yep. It's a light one.
Can you tell me what John's last name is? I can't.
Ja, it says Joshua, Joshua Eckler.
Joshua.
Eckler?
Eckler.
Please sign in if you haven't. Put my folder already left.
Oh, you don't worry your little head about it, we'll get it right back to you. Gonna hold it for ransom.
That happened once, oh, fine, no.
Hold that for ransom.
Alright, so, as we finish signing, no, cause I gotta sign the next one. There you go. Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, and next, we're back to citizens' comments and concerns, the second round, this time I'm gonna start online. If anyone online has comments, concerns, you have the floor. Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna go back to in here, cleared out, um, Andrew.
Citizen's input?
Citizen's input, comments, concerns?
Sure, I can throw in a few sentences.
Sure. You have the floor.
So, Andrew, get the, so, as you guys all know, we faced the issue a now, a year and a half ago, when I ran against Jim. When, uh, finance director was hired, there was not supposed to be in that position, we all knew that. Not the right certification, um, nepotism, this is the reason why we got organized, we got five selectmen board, and things are changing in this town. So, we all know we're gonna be facing this, even if we have, you guys digging out, extra money missing here, there, and that's what we're facing with six hundred or even a million. So, um, we feel your pain, we know that, but everybody should know that this did not just happen overnight, this was a deliberate action by other people. That's why finance director was, let's go. That's why things are changing, that's why you guys got depositions. So, you have citizens' support, obviously we have to face tough choices, cause we have to come up with the money. When I requested, um, a few months ago, uh, paperwork to see the Killington Road section between Route Four and Anthony Way, the budget said two-point-seven, and when I got the receipts, and it was three-point-two million, I was asking questions. Where did the money come from? How come Green Mountain Power bill for ninety thousand dollars wasn't even included in the list of paperwork that I requested? The money obviously came from somewhere, and now we're all finding holes in the budget. This is exactly why other selectmen were saying, the lawyers, lawyers' fear were not included in that estimate, uh, lawyers' fee, engineering fees were not included in the estimate, and this is bullshit. They knew what they were doing, this was not, this, this was deliberate. We were lied, because when somebody comes up with a budget, they say it's gonna cost us two-point-seven million, it should cost us two-point-seven, I mean, I can live with ten percent, not even, five percent more. But when we got the extra receipts and I realized, where's that receipt? And they're like, oh, sorry, we forgot to include that. It was not sorry, it was deliberate. So, now you guys are digging this out, it's gonna be painful for us, but all the public should know, and that should be actually in the mountain times, um, written in the article, that we are uncovering things. People should know that it's not just on you, that we're uncovering things that were done by previous people, so we can draw a nice clean line and start fresh. And I appreciate you guys doing this, because this was a long time overdue, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Andrew. Anyone else have any comments in the room? Alright.
Just that you checking off numbers I asked for.
I got them, I think, George.
Got you, George.
I'll be up next meeting.
Do you want, do you want me to call you with them, you wanna talk, you wanna wait till the next meeting?
I'd rather do it at three.
Okay, okay, okay.
Can we make sure it's on the agenda then?
I got them all in my.
Thank you. Um, again, thank you, everyone.
And that's also with the health benefits and all that jazz too.
Yep, yep. Alright, uh, select board member concerns, comments?
I do.
Yes.
So, this is nothing against Dave or anything, and I realize the guys are out working, but I'm seeing a lot of everyday road maintenance that is not being done. I mean, case in point, like the gentleman on Hadley Hill, potholes, there's catch basins up on the walkway that have been buried for over a month, almost two months now. There is stuff on the walkway, there's trees and ditches, there is a tree hanging over the road that's been hanging over the road since November, that hits UPS truck when he goes by, I've seen it happen. I mean, I realize they're shorthanded now, but most of this stuff went on before they were shorthanded, so, I understand that they're doing other things, but I think they need to figure out a way to get this normal maintenance stuff taken care of, because, I mean, these roads are really rough, and I think they need to at least try to put some coal patch in some of these places, I mean, if you do it, I mean, maybe it won't hold, but at least try some of these places.
So, we have been out doing some hot mix instead, Rick, to hopefully that that would be a little better.
I did not know that, so that's good.
So, like, you know, West Hill's getting redone this year.
I realize that.
River Road's getting done, which was, I'll, we'll just use that part of my report too, so, um, so.
Uh, are you talking the paved portion or the dirt portion?
So, the paved portion of River Road is getting reclaimed.
Yeah, I'm not talking about River Road, I'm talking about like.
Right, but I'm just gonna let you know, like, so Pike was out there marketing culverts today, so, that's gonna be a whole reclaim new culvert, so that, there's no point in putting patch on that, cause.
I'm talking about like the Killington Road and Coffee House Road.
The Killington was bad.
There's a lot on like Roaring Brook Road and places like that, and also another thing is, I mean, we put a new blacktop on Old Coach Road two years ago, and there still has not been shoulders put on the side of the road, I mean, I don't quite get that, it should be done, it helps protect the road, and there was gravel that was saved, we recycled gravel off Old Coach Road to go on those shoulders, that was being stored in the turnaround on North Side and never got done, I mean, it's just, I have no idea, but, I mean, I just, these are things that I just kinda find a little bit mind boggling, that's all.
I'll go riding around with Kevin here in a day or two and see what we can look at, so one other thing, that's funny you mentioned, there's some of the roads up, so, as you guys all know, like, maybe a year or so ago, there was an uproar about Winterberry.
Yeah.
And it going from pavement to dirt.
Yeah.
So, we asked Pike for a number on it, just to base it, it's forty-eight thousand dollars to do it, I think we've got it in the paving budget, even with after, cause we're getting that grant for, you know, we've got the grant, the class two grant coming in, we're just gonna pave it, be done with it.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you kinda, you kinda can't blame on the road was paved, now it's not, and it really would, you know.
They, they were, they were told, I remember that, they were told that it would be repaved.
Yeah, and they were essentially, a lot of people were told.
I mean, it's only, it's only like a quarter of a mile long or something, so, if Pike's up here, you know, they're already mobilized, it's, so, um, just wanted to throw that out there.
In the budget.
Yeah.
When you guys look at the roads, I'm discussing with you on another meeting, Dave, that, I'm on Route Four, that road's ten years old, it's fine, we're doing roads every two years, we're doing something wrong.
So, I'll tell you what's wrong with them, I mean, I, I, I looked at them the second day I was here.
There's two different classes, you said that the way they're doing it.
Right, the base is gone.
Maybe we should pay more money and get them done, so we don't have to do it.
So, that's what we're trying to do with River Road, is re, is reclaim it and base it, you know, but you look at like West Hill Road, and even East Mountain, trucks are on those roads, you know, and that's really the problem, that those roads are not built for, for, you know, the, I don't wanna pick on it, a truck that weighs more than what the road's limited for.
Roads are legal.
And they're just, they're hitting the shoulders, they're cutting them down, it's, they're run, they're not made for that kinda traffic.
Well, it's, the pitch is a little wrong, if they had engineers here at the time, though, yeah.
The car by engines raised hell with the blacktop.
But they just, and they get a lot of wear and tear, what do you have, like twenty thousand people skiing on a weekend day up here or something?
So is Route Four though.
Right, right, but Route Four's a different, that's a US route, so they, they based it different, and they, they used, they actually used different mix on it too, so there's a different.
Maybe that's something we should look into.
Well, when we looked at, when I, excuse me, when we were looking at this whole thing of us taking these roads over up by the resort, which I'm still leery of, but it's already been done, I wanted to make sure that we're, when these roads, the design was to be class two standards or higher, so that we're not taking over some roads, it's gonna fall apart in a few years from the amount of traffic that's on it.
Well, the amount of money we'll redo it all the roads, I would assume.
That, but I want them, I want them to be up to that class standard, one is.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
And one is we can get grant funding for class two highways, and we get money every year from the state for our class, you know, we don't have any class ones up here, but our class twos and class threes, we get maintenance money every year from the state for that too, that, you know, would go into.
Something to look into, because, I mean, it's a big expenditure here, and there's a reason, there's the snow and the plowing, and the, well, the customers and everything like that, but, you know, I think they should just be holding up a little, a little bit.
I mean, it is amazing like how much material has to be put on these roads in the winter time, it blows my mind.
Problem is, is when they built them originally, East Mountain's that way, they dropped trees in there, you know what I'm saying, they didn't do it properly to start.
Yep.
Although, on my house, it's starting to sink again, it'll sink again, and, you know.
We found these truck stumps up here already.
Over there, you go by them, you know, hybrids down that area, you got three areas there, you know.
That's actually all been reconstructed, it has fabric and underdrain and everything in there.
It's starting to sink again.
That helps, that helps a lot, fabric really helps, it stops the cracks, it does, but, yeah, just, you know, we, we've found stumps up here already, you know, on the water, stumps, boulders, no Volkswagen jet, but there might be one up there, who knows?
So, just so.
Don't, don't say that out loud.
You're gonna have work now, more work.
So, I'm a rookie on the maintenance that really just isn't up to par, and the road sweeping this year was a, just a disaster, and still is.
Did it?
There's roads right now that never got swept. And the bridge, the bridge on River Road, we're growing grass on the bridge, and that is.
On the bridge?
On the bridge, that bridge was done a few years ago, and it's unacceptable that that thing is sitting there with that much dirt on it and salt left over, and we're growing vegetation on the bridge. I've never, ever seen that happen before, it's sad.
I will get with our highway farmer and go do some visiting.
Bill, any, any comments?
Please.
Well, I think my only comment is, Dave, we support what you're doing, okay? I mean, we understand, we understand the scope of the task you have in front of you to go through everything, and I, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's difficult to come into a role, and it's like, you have this dumped on you, but you, I think I can speak for everyone on the board here, you have our support to keep working at it, and as you find things, we need to hear about them.
Yeah.
Bill, are you sucking up again?
Well, no, I.
I think it's important to say, I mean, I, he's, I think it's important to say the target gets put on his because he finds things, but the problem is, it's his job to find things.
Yes.
Okay, and that, that's exactly what he's supposed to be doing, and we've been running with temporary management structures for years, we gotta get out of that mode, because it's created a whole bunch of problems.
Well, you know, Bill, I, it's, it's interesting, thank you for saying that, but, you know, going through this once in another town, from, from basically the same, same situation, there was a lot of unrest, and, you know, in figuring it out and seeing what works and what doesn't work, and, you know, I mean, I, there was a, the town I was in that couldn't pass budgets for a year, you know, and that was, you learned a lot from that, and then the budget process and how to do it right. That was my first year on a select board, actually, when I, I learned to do that, but you're just like, holy crap, you know, but, um, yeah, and I know it's gonna ruffle some feathers, but I think, you know, looking at like, just some of this stuff and straightening things out and getting like, the right, you know, what's right for the entire town is really sort of what my focus is, and just, but just, there's a lot of stuff to fix, and we're just gonna keep fixing it. So, speaking of bridges on River Road, you guys did see that the bridge on, on, like, the one in the, you know, the intersection is closed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that, that bridge is not.
The thing should've been closed ten years ago. Can I make a comment on that? Can we see about getting some permanent road signs up? I know, we put those ones up there, fortunately we haven't had any strong winds to blow them, but those things will blow around, I think.
So, there's probably, just a heads up, there's probably gonna be a petition coming soon about just throwing up that section of road, which then reverts back to the, if the board approves it, goes back to the landowners, and we'd still be responsible, take the bridge out, but, that bridge, one of the abutments that was checked in April, and was checked three weeks ago, was that when we had it? It was undermining an additional five feet on one of the abutments, that's how bad it was, just from all these storm events that have happened, and it's just so loose through there, so, um, you know, I talked to the state bridge guy, he was great, and my concern was, did you guys wanna do something with this bridge, because your bridge on Route Four next to it, you know, is, he's like, no, we're good there, so they don't need it for like, a detour or anything.
Yeah, it is old Route Four too, actually.
So, right, so, there'll be more to come with that too.
Uh, I will say, the, um, selectman comment, we do have a positive, a very positive one, uh, that I wanna make sure everyone knew, Gerald, who works for.
Grol.
Or Grol, Grol, who works for, um, Highway, he's volunteers with the, with the fire department, he was one of the hardest working people in town, he, uh, got his US citizenship on Friday, and so we wanted to congratulate him. He says excited that he can now vote. Um, but I did wanna congratulate him. And then, so I think that moves to our last section of manager report, if you have anything left to cover.
I have one more question, quick, quick, quick.
I don't actually.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, West, West Hill Road, Ricky, do you remember eight, ten years ago, was it wider? Cause I think it was wider, but then.
It was wider, because we actually put the ditches in, and then they narrowed it up, so it had the real wide shoulders.
So, I remember Chad trying to cut corners, so he made it smaller, so.
They did that supposedly as a traffic calming thing, which.
But in reality.
Into that, I don't think it works, but it's just.
I would like to comment that if we're redoing West Hill Road, it would be nice to make it another four or five feet wider, because there are some sections, there, you can look, there is like eight or six feet of gravel, and before it goes into the ditch, uh, it would be nicer to have people, cause people walk up West Hill Road once in a while, or bike, if we have an extra four feet, it, it will make a big difference, even, uh, when they're, during the, the winter, when there is an ice storm, when there is a truck stuck there, I think, uh, if we're repaving it, it might make sense to just make it a little bit wider, as, as it used to be, uh, before.
Oh, I can certainly look into that, Andrew, um.
Are trucks allowed on that road?
What's that?
Are trucks allowed on that road?
No, they're not supposed to be on that road, we're, we should be, yes, um, I'll, I'll take a look at it, but to make that road that much wider might be.
So, even right now, the way it is, I know in some sections you can go a foot on each side, but when you pass Tanglewood and start going down, there is a section right before Timberline on the right, it looks like you have an extra six feet of, uh, material that's flat, so we might not need to go four or six feet all the way, in some sections we can go a foot on each side, in some sections we might just go two feet or maybe three feet.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, just, just to improve, give, give an extra space for bikers, cause I see a lot of times.
You gotta stay consistent with your road, man, you can't have like, the road's this wide, then it goes like this, then it goes like that, you really can't do that.
Dial it. Wait, we, we paint the lines how we want, so we can pave the roads how we want.
One, one more, one more question.
Good.
So, I noticed at night, when you're driving through this, the new intersection, Route Four and Anthony Way, during the day, those signs, left turn, right turn, they look good, but at night, they look like, they do not have enough, uh, paint inside, so they, at night, they look weird.
Those would be D-train signs.
Uh, wait, did you notice that at night?
No, I see who's.
No, so Killington Road and Route Four, those, those, uh, left turn, right turn stop, they're not fully painted, like, at night, it looks like the reflector is missing, it's only in half of it.
Okay.
So, when you guys are gonna be heading home, just take a look at it, cause I think maybe the company should come back and repaint them again.
I don't like the ones on interstate, they show back on your eyes.
We'll take a look at that one, cause that's definitely a safety issue. Alright, um, anything for manager report that was not covered?
Uh, the only thing is, the town office renovation started last week, electricians have been there, and they've been ordering materials, so, um.
That's been going on.
No, the, the downstairs one wasn't scheduled to start until July seventh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, they were in for the vault, but the vault was a whole totally different thing, so they came in and prepped for the vault.
Okay.
Then we redid the contract, and so, so they're.
So, but they're actually going in, doing the work.
They're there, I talked with the electrician today, as he was playing with some alloys.
Excellent. Great news. Alright, I don't believe we have executive session, it's on there, but I don't believe we have it, unless anyone else has something, so I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting at eight-thirty-nine, uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, I got a third from Jack, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.